All right, thank you everyone for coming to our meeting tonight. We have a few things on the agenda.
First.
I see that we have some possible agenda additions. One would be to approve the access road. I think that's for Constantino?
Yes.
And the other one is sign consolidated claim. So let's talk, is there a motion to accept the access permit? And we'll put that under, I guess we can put that under highway.
No move.
There a second?
Second.
Hold in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The next one is to sign consolidated claim. And we'll put that under new business.
No move.
Second.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, at this time I'd ask for a motion with regard to the regular meeting on June 22nd for approval. Is there any corrections or deletions?
Have them look them over. I would make a motion that we approve those.
I'll second that.
All right, is there any, anyone seeing any corrections or deletions?
I thought they looked good.
Yep, very good. Hold in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone opposed? Let's see. All right, we'll go down to the fire alarm system discussion. It's two bids from Royal Group and Vermont Electric Services.
Mr. Chairman, I have the two representatives on Zoom over here. We have Jay from Royal and we also have Dave from Forest Security. So do you have a preference of, we'll let them speak to it, speak to their bid first?
Yeah, 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 let's do Royal first.
So the preference is Jay for you to go first and just explain your bid and explain what your proposal and go ahead and explain that to the board.
Okay, can you hear me all right?
I can hear you fine, yes.
Okay, good. So we went with a conventional fire alarm panel based on the size of the buildings, addressable, that seemed, the cost for addressable that seemed necessary from a money standpoint. So it was a, in each of the buildings, the town office on Middle Road, the town garage on Town Garage Road, and the Grange Hall on Golden Avenue. For full automatic detection systems in each one with full occupant notification as well as manual activation as well. As we saw from the requirements of the Fire Marshal, the two buildings of the town hall and town garage were required to have emergency force notification, which is the panels dialing out automatically. And the Grange Hall that was, he wasn't making it required, it was optional. And each panel comes with a built-in dialer. Should you want to supply phone lines first, or you can go with a cellular and/or internet option for that to report as well. I mean, in a nutshell, I mean, that's the basic part of it. It covers all requirements that the Fire Marshal laid out. Hope that any questions or anything you may have for me?
Any questions from the board on Royals bid? I know you're still passing them over there.
I think we're going to discuss the Grange Hall tonight. I'll let the board discuss it first, I think. But the most, the town office and town garage.
Yes, so tonight, yeah, I should preference that for you guys. So tonight we're discussing the town office and the town garage. The Grange Hall is operated by a separate board and they will be looking at that, at that. Okay?
Okay.
Um, not hearing any questions, so I guess Dave will let you jump in and you can talk a little bit about your bid.
Sorry, couldn't get it done to you. Essentially the same thing that Jay said, except I did go with it's addressable. And the reason that I went with the addressable because there was a question on the low temperatures. Addressable potter panel, if you have a heat detector, it can also act as a low temperature device. Other than that, they're pretty much the same. The built-in dialer can do phone lines. The potter panel has onboard IP communicator, which you can utilize emails for when the panel is in trouble or anything like in abnormal condition and alarm as well. But we're going to be doing emergency force notification.
Hey Dave, I've got a couple of questions for you. Board of the mind.
So that's Matt, if you can hear him.
On the town office, Dave, you didn't put a CO alarm in. You know about it or not?
I couldn't hear you, I'm sorry.
He said that on the town office bid, it did not include a CO alarm.
That's because it's built in?
It's built in.
The other question I had is his, Dave's doesn't include permits or final inspection fees.
Did you hear that, Dave, by chance?
Well, my labor includes the final, but it doesn't include, the electrical is being pulled by Vermont Electrical Services. Yeah, it was a bit of a misstep. I don't know why he wanted to break it down that way.
Yeah, on the bid it says the, this project does not include fire permits, fire inspections, fire panels, fire alarm devices for that attrition. So does yours, does yours include the fire permits, Dave, and the fire, and the final inspection? Or is that an extra fee?
Yeah, my labor would include that, yes.
Okay, okay.
The fire permits are, yeah, I can, I can cover that cost as well. But I thought, I thought the electrical installer was going to cover the cost of permitting.
And Dave, what's the difference between the fire alarm inspection stickers?
He's, he's.
What's the difference between the fire alarm inspection stickers?
He wanted to know what the difference was between the fire alarm inspection stickers.
They can be 40 bucks and 50 bucks and they're the same stickers, aren't they?
One of them's 40 and one of them's 50 quoted.
Oh, that's just a typo. They're supposed to be 40, okay?
Both of them are supposed to be 40.
Okay.
When did you, both of yous, this question is to both of yous. We have to look at our budgets as well. So we're going to look at both these bids for a short period of time. And I think that when we do a little bit of research regarding the treasurer's side of things, then we can get back to you. So it probably wouldn't be till, when would you say? Yeah, when would you say would be a good time for us to?
With these projects? I would say that depending on the cost of the total project, I've not seen the bids. So I don't know what the cost is that we're looking at.
Can we finalize this, make a decision by our next meeting? Is that okay?
So I guess the question is, is how long your bids are good for? Are they good for another two, three weeks if we go that long?
Yeah, I'm sure, I have not, I haven't heard it pretty soon on equipment yet.
Okay. How about you, Jay? Is your number solid for at least a couple more weeks?
Yes, so I don't see a problem with that.
Okay, okay.
And we will definitely get back to you prior, well, to our next meeting, which is what day?
It is the 27th.
Friday, 27th.
So the 20, basically, the decision's going to be made by the 27th of this month is what the, is what the conversation is.
The 27th?
Yes, that's, that's when the decision will be made by.
Okay.
Okay.
I got, I got a question for both of you.
Sorry, Dave, what was that?
If you want us to join the Zoom again, or you're just going to make the decision and let us know via email or?
I, I think what we'll do is we'll make the decision and our assistant Katie, who you both have worked with, will be in touch.
Okay.
And then we do have one, sounds like a couple more questions here.
Okay.
No, go ahead, Rick. He might want to ask my question.
I have one question. Both systems are obviously dialable, like you said. Are they, is that included in the price say for a year of monitoring?
That was my question. How much a month is it?
I did not include monitoring fee.
Okay.
I mind, it's, it's not included in that final price, but it is clearly listed in the notes at the bottom.
So on Royals, it is listed in the bottom?
Right here.
And Dave, can you give us an estimate on yours, what monitoring does cost?
Yep, I can, oh, sorry. It, it depends. If you go straight dialer, it's one fee. And then if you go with internet and dialer, the price is, oh. Straight dialer. Probably a little bit less. I think it goes from like 3, I don't know, 333 a year down to around 290 if you go internet.
Okay.
Because we use it as a primary.
Okay, so, so roughly 330 then for, for the dialer? Straight dialer?
Or straight, straight phone.
Okay, okay.
Like I said, you can go a combination of one phone and one internet. And then we use the internet as the primary.
Okay, okay. Does the board have any other questions?
Did anybody over here have any questions? No.
Well, gentlemen, we'll thank you for both being with us tonight. We appreciate it and we obviously will be in touch.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
So one thing that I would just like to note is the town hall budget for maintenance in total this year is only $5,000. So just to do this project alone, based on Royals quote, you're going to need to figure out another 4,400. Whether you want to do that out of contingency, that's something you guys need to discuss. And the town garage maintenance budget for this year is only $4,000. So again, you're looking at raising a little over $4,000. So again, whether that's something that we want to pull out of the highway miscellaneous budget, or whether we want to pull out of the select board's contingency, that is something that you guys are going to need to discuss.
Well, I think, I think personally, I think we've had our look tonight. We've made a commitment to making a decision next meeting. This is not something, obviously, we budgeted for because we didn't know that the Fire Marshal was going to bring the hammer down on this.
The Fire Marshal's bringing the hammer down on this.
It wasn't the Fire Marshal, it was the BLCT.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, as I know on that, the BLCT offers a $5,000 safety grant. And it runs on the calendar year, the funds available. So me and Cash were talking that if we budgeted it for next year and applied for that grant sooner in the year, hopefully we would get the full 5,000.
And that 5,000 will be used for the town highway. Right?
For the, this fire alarm system.
Right, but so these bids, I mean, how long did?
Only 30, I mean, 30 or 60 days on the bid.
Yeah, the bids are not good for that.
They're not going to be good.
You might want to give me the one this year and then one next year. It's a good thing to do. I'd also recommend, these are non-required systems, so there, there's no requirement by the Fire Marshal's office on the systems. I'd recommend shooting these systems, these things out to Wade or somebody over at BLCT and have them look at those quotes and say, are we overprotective, underprotected? What are your recommendations? He might say, oh, you might need two smokes, not six smokes. Or, and get his take on it. Or he might say, you need 15 smokes. I, I don't know. I'm just saying, you might want the insurance company, since they're maintaining this, to show them the quotes and find out from them what they're looking for. Maybe it's something simpler.
Also, just your, your contingency budget for fiscal '21 is $5,000.
Yeah, we cut that way back. So I'll make, I'll make a motion that we have Katie send these bids to Wade immediately tomorrow to see if we can get some feedback in time for next meeting.
Plus, I think if you would, we could ask the treasurer, Heidi, to see where we might be able to punch some money out.
So I'm good with that motion too, yeah, as a part of the motion to start.
Is there any further discussion? All right, hearing that, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Moving right along. And Katie, did you get some of what Matt was also saying was good? Always good suggestion, I thought, Matt. Highway, under Road Commissioner, do you want to give us the report and then we'll go East Line item?
Mr. Chairman, just because of the amount of guests we have this evening, I would make a motion that we jump and have a discussion regarding East Street immediately.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll make a second to that.
Hold in favor?
Aye.
Okay. There is, you folks are.
East Street.
East Street, I take it. And did you write this letter? Ah, okay. Would you, do you want me to read this letter?
If you want to, it'll help, if it helps you all, sure. If you wanted to condense it, you could do that as well.
I think the most important thing, maybe read that letter and that explains to the public that's not here, what our understanding are, what we've been brought for.
Okay, this was brought to the select board chair's attention. And it is, I am writing to start a discussion to lower the speed limit on East Street exiting the covered bridge. Currently on Kingsley Covered Bridge side, 35 miles per hour is writ. That's what the sign says now. I think it's all along that road is 35 anyway. I live on East Street where the hill levels off and I have seen cars, trucks going fast past my driveway. I am concerned for my neighbors and myself as it is dangerous as I pull out. When the hill levels out, a driver going south does not have a clear vision to see if a car is exiting the driveway. Andrea Hawkins driveway is first going south, then mine, and then Jacob Lane. Yesterday, 7:120 at 2020 Mill River, oh. Hey, excuse me. You know. Yesterday, 7:120, a 2020 Mill River graduate was pulling out of a Jacob Lane and collided with a car coming up the hill heading south on East Street. This has not been the first time there has been an accident on this stretch. In parentheses, perhaps a sign on the hill could be placed saying blind driveways. I agree totally with that too. A few years back, a car went out of control and landed in my dish coming up the hill full speed. It is time to take action in lowering the speed limit on East Street. I counted how long I had vision from the hill leveling out until my driveway. It was approximately 2.5 seconds. It is unsafe to go 35 miles an hour up the hill because there are people walking, cars pulling out of driveways, at a Hawkins Lane, or Hawkins Yard, Jacob Lane, and three other homes, and yours. And let's see, let me jump down a little bit. In addition, the road curves by Jacob Lane and Chases property, again, which makes a clear vision of pedestrians, children, and adult bicycling impossible. Going a slower speed would help make the road safer. Airport road is at 35 miles per hour. It is paved and pretty straight. East Street through the covered bridge is neither. It is not paved, it has a pretty big hill, and it is not straight. I was told that speed limit on Gorge Road was just lowered, and that's a fact. And you're asking, please do the same here. I am also requesting a Rutland Sheriff to sit either on Pond Road, or I offer my driveway or Andrea Hawkins driveway to help cars adhere to the speed limit, which I hope is lowered to ensure safety. By the by, on Route 7 around Ace Hardware, the road is posted at 35 miles per hour. How is it that our dirt road coming out of a covered bridge going up a curving hill is also posted at 35 miles per hour with driveways? Please bring this up for discussion so as to avoid more accidents and ensure safety for those who live on East Street. Thank you, Janine Nielsen, East Street. And there are several co-signers on the bottom.
Mr. Chairman, I've thought quite a bit about this and would like to make a motion for discussion to have us lower the speed limit of East Street from the intersection of Bump Road to Gorge Road to 25 miles an hour.
All right, is there a second for that motion, for discussion?
Bump Road to what?
Gorge Road.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. Let us discuss. Now, you're, work for the Sheriff Department. And you've been a constable in town for many years. What is your thoughts on that, especially that area?
Well, that, that does have a lot of really in that short span of quite a few hidden areas where people can come out. I know this was mentioned about lowering the speed limit one time in town. I did that years ago and, oh my gosh, you know, you thought you'd start a riot. But no, I, I agree, it could be and maybe should be. There's got to be a little bit of signage for, that you're going to have to do for speed change ahead, that type of thing. And, but, that, you know, for, this is small money, in my opinion, compared to the near, an accident such as what might have happened.
As you exit the bridge going south, we have Knights Road, which is on the left, and that's posted at 25. So people that are coming out of that bridge, they're putting their tail to the middle and they're going up a road that's often rutted, in all offense to our highway fixing department, but it's, currently we have maybe two huge ruts on the right. So it perhaps makes people even put their foot down harder. And as they approach that hill, you're almost in the middle of the road, which you shouldn't be, trying to get up to the top of it, only to come past Jacob Lane, which is a little bit hard to see, to come up to the dangerous curve. And I say it that way because there's already a sign there from the town to go around that bend. I totally agree with you, up to Bump Road would be perfect as far as 25 miles an hour. The rest of it's a little bit straight. But I can't back out. Friends that come to see me are, oh, I'm, I'm going out to the road to make sure it's as safe as I can be. I've been pulling in the reverse into my driveway, which might not be as, as safe as turning around in my own driveway. But I've been there 37 years and, which I realize, houses in the back of my driveway are newer, there's a little bit more construction, newer homes as you go towards. And I would love it to be reduced and to be monitored because I don't think that even if we lower it to 25 miles an hour, anyone's going to care about it.
I personally agree with you and I appreciate you coming here with these concerns. I used to live over that way a long time ago and even back then, people used to step on it pretty good. I would like an opinion of the Road Commissioner.
I totally understand the 25, but I wouldn't stop at Bump Road. I would do the whole East Street and Haven Hill as one unit. The reason being is, when cars are traveling.
This is Andrea Hawkins. I didn't know if I could say something.
Don't slow down for slower speaker.
Couldn't be present.
You're going to the city of Rutland.
Someone speaking?
You're going to the city of Rutland and it's 35. A lot more doing 40, 45 still. And that's where I think the whole road ought to be 30, 25.
Did you say 25?
25, 25. And the reason being is, I've been up there quite often and there's people walking, jogging, walking their dog, horseback riding. There's a lot of pedestrian activity on that road. And we, we think past the Bump Road south that it's straight. It is straighter, but there is still crooks and turns and ups and downs all the way through. The only flats is out by Spencer's.
What is the speed limit on the Wallingford end of that? You know?
I don't know.
Andrea Hawkins can speak to that. She was just telling me some information, but if you would allow her to speak, perhaps she could tell you.
Okay, we're ready for you to speak.
Okay, um, I'm not sure what was just asked. But, um, my driveway is exactly, and Mike Klopson knows exactly where I live. I've lived here 41 years. It is right on top of the hill. Honestly, you can hear everybody gun it from the bridge up, all the way and around the corner, and then in the snow, whatever, they may end up in Janine's drive, or Janine's ditch. It was paved a long time ago at one point in time. The speed limit was never changed at that time. So it still held 35. Now it is not paved so that it's still 35. And I'm not even sure if there's a speed limit sign until you actually get up to the dangerous curve sign by the Chases and the Booker's firm. But my driveway being at the top of the hill, I cannot see unless I turn around and try to face out. And I have a certain dear old son that I am petrified of even testing the road to go to get the mail because they just fly up and down. I know that I've noted, because I drive East Street all the way down to 140, and turn 25 right at the pavement starts as you head down the hill to get to 140. I'm not sure when that changed for Wallingford, but the rest of it was 35 up until that pavement mark. So I'm just, I am fully, fully think, you know, would love to have the speed limit lowered to 25. It's my concern that you can do that and it not be monitored. There are some great places and people have offered for people to, you know, the Sheriff's Department doesn't. I know that every once in a while, the sheriff that's at the airport kind of just makes a loop, but he doesn't do anything as far as enforcing anything. And he's not necessarily always around here when it happens. The high times are from 7 until like 9:30 in the morning and from 3 to about 10:00. That high traffic, kids coming home, parents coming home, little buses, don't even come down at 3:00. They'll walk into the bus stops. Um, yeah, I, it's been a great concern for, I've been, you know, here for a really long time, so it's been a great concern for me meantime. And I'm probably, you know, for doing the 25, but we also need to enforce it. At least have a presence so that they know on this road that you can't do that.
Thank you, Andrea. Would you consider, Rob, changing your bit of motion to the entire length?
I think at this time I'm comfortable with where my motion is.
All right.
Do you have another comment on it?
Yes.
In working with the roads and stuff, we look at basically road health. And what we're finding is, like this year, we've had a lot of dry, dry spells. And when you have dry, the faster vehicles go, the more dust you have. Any dust comes off the roads, that means we're losing the fines of our road, the actual rock fine. So we end up with more stone on the road. So with a slower pace, and we've already asked Mike, we've experienced it on the other side of town up in Chippenhuck on especially one hill, with delivery trucks creating a dust storm because of their speed and stuff. And if that speed was lowered, it would help create less vacuum for dust. It's proven fact.
Do you, do you folks notice, for instance, FedEx or any of these guys doing that same thing? We've had that issue.
I weren't going to name anybody, but.
Yeah, we had, we've had that issue over on the other side of town too, where we're dust control and all this other stuff. But these guys. But these guys, you know, they're on a mission trying to get their work done and...
Yep. Um, a bunch of years ago, there was a UPS truck in my ditch. I must have the good ditch. But as the road has been raised over the years, because now the ditch is extremely deep and not safe really, um, the UPS truck was totally there and I immediately called and I said, "Are you okay?" And he didn't want to be reported.
Yeah.
You know?
For obvious reasons.
Been a bunch of different things going on.
So at this point, there is a motion on the, it has been seconded, we are having this discussion. Um, personally, I think that the whole length would have been a good maneuver, but for right now to move this issue along with regard to how close some of these houses are to the road and to the blind spots on the roads, um, I'd ask for, uh, a vote on this.
I'm not, Mr. Chairman.
Mm-hmm.
I think we should go back and look at it just a little bit. I totally agree with 25 from the intersection of Gorge Road and East Street to Bump Road.
Oh, East Street.
But you get out beyond that, your houses are spread out quite a lot. Uh, there is the dust problem, what Cash says, I agree. But if you bring out down 25 the full length, I think we're gonna be getting static from people living out on the south end, that it's too slow.
Well, to that point, we have a motion on the floor right now to just go to Bump Road. Uh, and I wanna find out what the majority has left for it. So I'll call a motion. All those in favor of the motion, uh, stated by Rob, please say aye.
Aye.
To go from Bump Road down to the bridge only?
Yes. All right, so that's, anyone opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so it's four to one. The next thing is, um, we'll have to consider signage, stuff like this. And there's a process that we have to go through. Katie, do you wanna?
Yeah. Um, so the process for an ordinance is we have to make an amendment and it has to be approved at the next meeting. Um, and then the following day, it'll go in the newspaper that there's gonna be a change to the ordinance. And then 60 days after that amendment is approved, the speed limit will go into effect. So that'd be 60 days from July 28th, that it could be enforced at 25.
An extra thing that might be considered is the people that own the mill somehow were involved with making a very pretty sign on the top of the bridge. That would need to be changed as it says 35 miles per hour.
Is that a painted sign?
I believe she's an artist and I believe she painted it, but I don't know why.
So what we can do is consider...
It's a board, a board, isn't it?
When, go ahead.
I was gonna say that we could talk to, uh, them and see if they could just, instead of a three, put a two. That, go ahead.
Quite honestly, I would say that they do not put the speed limit on that because it's not a regulatory sign that is legal in the state of Vermont.
I don't know why it was that way.
These signs have to be certain sizes, they have to be in a pole on the ground, they can't be on top of a bridge. And, you know, I've, I've done this town a couple of different times on speed, uh, recommendations. And, um, that's not a legal sign. It ha, it really should be painted over. And that's what my...
Well, you're the legal guy.
Yeah, that's what my recommendation would be.
Uh, I think that once this is established, you know, we order our signs and all these things, we go through the process, uh, uh, the actual, this is the start of a process, having new folks come in and, and, you know, bring us to our attention. I think the next step is, you know, we have some work to do with ordering, ordering signs and all these kind of things. Um...
Is it approved by you all to do at least 25 miles per hour from the bridge to Bump Road?
It's, it's approved, it just now has to go through that process.
Now it gotta go through that.
So, um, but what I would also say is that you probably could, I think you're the contact for the Sheriff's Department. I think at this point, it's, we obviously are gonna notify them anyway, but we know the high traffic times that are a problem even now, so if we can ask them to target that area.
I already got it written down. All right?
This is the young lady who unfortunately collided and it spurred me to do something because I've been watching it for 30 years and it's, needs to change and I'm thankful that you all heard of.
Well, I'm glad that you...
All things considered.
You get heard or anything.
Brand new graduate.
Brand new, well, congratulations.
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 I don't live on East Street, I'm her grandmother, so I visit there a lot and I, I just, I just wanna make the comment how grateful I am that my granddaughter was able to be here and hear how this process works. Hear that, you know, the public is invited and welcome to express their thoughts and that they are thoughtfully considered. Um, this is a good civics lesson.
Yeah, it's good.
For my granddaughter, even if it had not gone the way we would have liked, it's still a good civics lesson and I appreciate that.
Well, you know, that's what really works and to your point with your granddaughter, what really works is if people get involved, uh, things happen. So I think this is a good lesson for you, it's a lesson for the rest of us too, if people come in and, you know, have issues.
And it's getting harder and harder to fill these seats, so remember that for the future.
And not because of COVID-19.
Yes, sir.
True.
We work for you folks. Yep, so you bring something to us, we'll do something with it.
And, uh, one of the things that I'm gonna stay on top of especially is the, uh, a sign that does speak to the hidden driveway things, because some people will pay attention to those kind of things.
Well, that's good for Cash to know, we might even have some down there, do it, no. So we'll have to get some.
And where to put it, you know, maybe on the, the approach to the hill?
Yep, no, that's...
If necessary, if we tell it to...
Yeah.
It'd be about three quarters of the way up the hill, approximately.
Well, thank you for coming out.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Good job. Moving right along. Um, back to Highway, uh, road commissioners report. What do you got for us?
Uh, just update, we just got the grader back today and we're actually gonna start, uh, resurfacing actually up on East Street around that corner you're talking about. Um, we're gonna start just below, just north of, uh, Bump Road, weather permitting, I'm hoping, and...
So is this to solve the hydraulics problem?
This is to, uh, actually use the stone dust on it.
I know, but I'm talking about getting the grader back, was that the hydraulics issue?
All hydrology on that.
Was that what was fixed?
Uh, actually it was a sensor.
Oh, that's right, you told me about that, okay. Yeah, sorry.
For the all-wheel drive.
Yeah.
And it's been ongoing and hopefully that's the problem, because it was $1,100 per.
I didn't realize that you'd be speaking about this, but, um, when my little ones were over, my, I have two grandchildren, we watched a huge cloud of dust. I was on the other side of the road visiting my neighbor with them and I saw it coming towards my house and I went, huh! You know, I mean, it's huge and it's all on the leaves and plants and that's okay, but then I watched it approach the house, I'm going, oh my goodness! And we didn't want anybody to be...
That's where people don't realize how much material we lose off the roads because of speed. And this is where my objective is, I have no problem posting your side, but I'd like the whole road posted for that, the financial aspect of the town on the whole road.
When, um, to, to get away from that discussion, but to keep going on...
Okay.
On our agenda, I think that, um, for instance, I see you have the Quarterline Road here to talk about. All over town, we have hills, like you guys have over your house, but, uh, Quarterline Road, we have, uh, Mufford Road, we have Tier Road, where people get on these roads and I, for the life of me, I can't understand why they gotta go 90 miles an hour on these roads. Uh, but after talking with Cash and then having some complaints, especially on Quarterline Road, which is the biggest hill we have to look at, I'm, uh, talking with the neighbor up there and stuff, I'm really gonna start pushing that we start having discussions about blacktopping that road there. When I talked to Kamla Victory, who's the bigger landowner of all those folks in that area, he gave permission to take down trees so that we can continue ditching down there, uh, so long as the end result is that we blacked out that hill. As road commissioner, what's your thoughts on that?
My thoughts on that, as a long-term solution, yes. I'm just trying to figure out the financial aspect of it, because we actually have 25 and a half miles of tire road in town already that we're having a hard time keeping up with. And here we're gonna tire approximately two more miles of road. That's my issue on the financial side. And you gotta understand that, once we do the tree cutting, the ditching and culverts, that we need to let the road settle in, make sure the dynamics of the road work as far as water flow and stuff, and let it settle. There's nothing that's gonna, we need, this is gonna be a two to three-year program.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Well, we need, my biggest thing is the financial aspect of it, of here we're gonna tire another two, two miles of road, because you can't just tire that hill, you need to start at the ball field, because I can't send a plow truck up there just to plow that hill, because you really can't get from the ball field if it's dirt, because we have different material on the truck. The tire requires salt...
Oh, I understand.
And the dirt's required sand with no salt. So we need to look at that aspect. And that's, my whole thing is the financial aspect of the tire and stuff.
There should be.
And I totally agree that that hill and Tier Road is, would be a part, um, well, a backup on Tier Road, part of, part of Tier Road be, and especially the hill.
The...
With the financial aspect of this, how do we, how do we get from here to there financially?
One of the...
And maintaining our roads that we have already.
A part of that discussion though is, I would like to, to know, for possibly going forward, the maintenance that you guys have to do on that road over and over and over again, is it worth blacktopping that and that will cut that maintenance down? Once the road is reestablished, as you have pointed out.
We, we reinstalled that culvert, a 60-foot culvert in one spot partway down the hill.
Yep.
And that has helped tremendously. If you tire that road, we're averaging $3,921 a year just on salt per mile of road. So if we tire two miles of road, we're looking at another $8,000 just for winter maintenance for salt, that says nothing about the plow truck or nothing, which is plowing it already.
And that's gonna be a high usage area, so that could be a low estimate. That hill's gonna be hot, I mean, think about, if you, if you, that's an average number, but if you look at Walker, if you look at Walker Mountain and did a true case study on what you throw on Walker Mountain for salt a winter, I would be willing to venture, take what you put on Walker Mountain and double it for Quarterline Hill.
This, this Walker Mountain right now, I would say gains probably about 35% more product than any, any other road in town. The hill, from Crick Road to the top of Walker Mountain.
But then, so the counter to that argument here again would be, what is, and maybe this is something that we have to do for a year or two in a study, to find out how much money you guys are putting into just trying to maintain that now.
Well, the maintenance...
Well, I think with the, the improvements that were made, it's gone down a lot.
With just that one culvert, it's, it's gone down tremendously. A lot, a lot.
So the trees that you're talking about cutting are on the right, if we're going up, are on the right-hand side below where you've done?
Yeah, I believe there's like five, five trees going up beyond the left-hand side and then there's three, three more that need to be cut on the right-hand side and that ditch pulled, that bank needs to be pulled out, it'd be a lot of material.
The other thing that you have to remember is this select board cannot bind future select boards to any decisions. So it's not like we can sit here tonight and say that the end result is Quarterline Hill is gonna be paved, when three, four, five years from now, because it's a long game, it's not a short game, you can't, we can't do that, because in the long run, we're not gonna be the ones, you know, chances are, we're not gonna be the ones sitting here to make that decision.
So for me, right now, that would, what would satisfy me right now would be going forward, Heidi, every time you do any work on that hill...
Okay.
I wanna see a cost reflection.
We're, we're actually itemizing...
We already started that process at the beginning of last fiscal year. So to give you a quick estimate, last year for the entire year of maintenance of the dirt road was $3,800.
That don't include...
Just the hill, that was just for the hill.
That didn't include the...
But that was including the ditch work that they did to make it so that they wouldn't have to have the problems that they're having or that they have had in the past.
Now, is that cost from material or is that both labor and...
That's just material.
That's material cost.
Yes, but then add in labor.
Well, you were gonna be adding in labor, you're talking about salt costs and maybe in the future anyways.
Yes, but what, what I'm talking about right now is labor, um...
It's gonna wash.
Every time it washes out, you're up there working on it.
Well, you're, so a decent estimate that I was always taught is your material, whatever your material cost is, take the same cost and add it to labor. So if it was $3,800, as a rough number, you could throw in another $3,800 in your labor cost. So you're talking probably seven grand. So right there, and obviously that's not counting sand usage in the winter, because we don't track sand usage by road, but it, it doesn't have sand usage and it doesn't have plowing hours in there, but again, you're gonna plow it anyway, you're gonna sand it anyway. So that's not, that's not gonna go in there, but if you look at that, and this is in my mind, that's the cost roughly of just what the salt is gonna take for that road in the wintertime. So...
Winters are rougher than others.
And some winters are worse than others, so...
But when again, you also have to take into consideration that that figure is also including the ditch and culvert work that was done as preventative to fixing the problem to begin with. So that initial cost, we should start seeing a cost savings on the back end now, so hopefully by the end of this fiscal year, it won't nearly be that amount.
The other thing that I question is the water quality issues, how do those change when it goes to pavement? Because clearly, so water that's coming off of there now is going into the ditches and obviously doing what it's supposed to be doing. But as soon as you turn that to blacktop, that water gains velocity. I mean, that's just, it, it's just, it's the nature of the science and the physics, it's gonna gain velocity coming off that hill to the bottom. And I would question whether or not there's gonna be enough water flow that it's gonna be ripraped to the gills, because it's gonna wash the ditches at that point. So you're gonna, you're gonna alleviate one problem to create another.
That's where approximately four culverts are required...
Yeah.
To take care of that scenario, to get that smaller volume water quicker off, away from the road.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you could do it with two culverts.
Sure.
But in that particular case...
Then that's why I doubled it up, as well, four culverts up on that lower section...
Yeah.
Correct that problem and take...
So you're roughly, you've got a third left or you got a half of it left?
What's that, the ditch?
To finish coming down through.
Oh, no, we only done probably 20%.
Okay, I thought you were closer to half, I didn't realize you weren't that far.
And that's what we talked about is, uh, renting or hiring in a big excavator and, because we don't have the machine excavated to do it efficient, efficiently.
So, so, so I guess my thought is, I'm all for getting the maintenance problem solved, getting the project finished, but what Mr. LaVictory has to realize is, we can't bind something years out that it's gonna be paved. I, I think that one of the, and Cash and I talked a little bit about this, one of the... I, I think that one of the, and Cash and I talked a little bit about this, one of the issues that I see is, and I'm sure probably your all minds have gone there too, uh, an accusation at every town meeting has been, we can't maintain the tar roads that we've got. And people say, and I think like Cash said, if you went out and used a grant and paved two miles of Quarterline Road that have never been paved before, you're gonna have people all over town that are gonna say, well, why didn't in front of my house get done? It's got potholes and it's had potholes for wherever.
Look at Walker Mountain Road.
Sure.
We're slated, if we get a grant, to go from the bottom of the hill here all the way to East Temuth Road.
Correct.
And then when you go get that done, you're looking at from McCormick's Machine Shop out towards Chapman's.
Yep, yep.
I mean, that's, that's another major corridor that's in town, like St. Middle Road.
I mean, you and I talked a little bit, in order to get the town on a, what did we say, a ten-year cycle? Where every tar road is paved in ten years.
We need to do two and a half miles a, a year, average.
Yeah, so.
We're looking, that's about three hundred thousand dollars a year.
And the other reality is, two and a half miles a year to get caught up, I would love to do the math on how many years do we have before we're caught up? Because we've got a lot of catch-up work to do.
See, and that's what Heidi and I talked about today a little bit. If we don't get grants, which don't look too good at all.
Yeah.
Think Katie can do a follow-up later on that. Is the money that's allocated by eighty thousand to actually top coat some of the decent roads to keep those, which is cheaper, the top coating, if you wait too long, then you gotta go with your base coat plus a top coat.
Yep. Yep.
And people need to understand that, the residences of town, the taxpayers.
And, and with the sta, the, the state, that the state is in right now, we're gonna be lucky to get anything.
Yeah.
I mean.
Be lucky if they don't ask us anymore.
You know, they passed, they passed the, the stopgap to get them till, I guess, end of August. And then they're gonna be right back at it. And I'll tell you right now, that budget's gonna be a nightmare. I mean, they're already warning that, you know, if you, if you have a grant program, don't count on it probably for a number of years because it's gonna take that long for things to come back.
This was a conversation that I said that I would bring up to the board.
Sure, sure.
And.
That makes sense.
And I think it's important for us to have this in an open public forum like this so that people understand.
Yeah.
That, you know, just because you're sitting home watching TV on your road and everybody's happy, doesn't mean that all the way through town, that's the same case.
And I, I totally understand that Quarterline Hill ought to be paved. But I'm just worried about the financial aspect of it. When we have other roads that we're having a hard time keeping up.
Well, I think the general consensus is, if that was to be done, we're talking years out. We're not talking anything anytime soon.
Okay, moving right along, that was a good discussion, thank you. Uh, Pimple Hill Road discussion.
Pimple Hill, I got a call and actually from two different residences of people going the wrong way on that road.
I got a call too.
I did.
There's a do not enter sign and I'm thinking about adding a do not, uh, wrong way sign like Route Seven has, down about thirty, forty feet. And maybe that'll deter them. I don't, I'm wondering, these people that are doing it, individuals, I think that they won't care. But if something happens, maybe it's better.
I think for so long, people have been adjusted to, that's one way you're going up.
So, next question, is that one, did we ever change the ordinance so that road is listed as one-way? Cause I was on the board at that time and I don't remember changing the ordinance.
Uh, but we did change all signage and stuff.
Correct.
That was through Irene.
But I don't know if the ordinance ever got changed, so we may need to give that some more teeth and change the ordinance.
But we'll look at it, but the sheriffs have been patrolling that, right, Rick?
Yep.
And they've been doing what they're supposed to do legally.
They've been all over.
Um, as a treasurer, if you're gonna make a change to the, to the ordinance or if you're gonna discuss something like that now, I would request that you do that tonight because, uh, for Katie to make the change, because every time you make a change to that ordinance and it needs to be posted in the paper, it's like two hundred dollars to post it for one day.
Yeah.
So please, please, like, be.
Change that ordinance so they don't post it in the paper, it'll be reached in the paper on the board.
But keep that in the back of your mind that, okay, if we're gonna talk about this road or if there's another road that you've been thinking about, please just be cognizant of the cost of what it is to post these things in the paper.
Is that the actual name of the road, is Pimple?
We know that.
I think so.
Taxpayers are especially gonna be struggling this year.
Been called everything.
Yeah.
Be aware of the cost of things.
Hateful Hill is.
We can't actually, unless we break out the ordinance right now and look it up.
Katie has it.
So, let's, let's just do it this way and allow for some research in the long run. I'll make a motion right now that if we determine that that ordinance has not been changed for that road, that Katie includes that ordinance change in the east street ordinance change and do it all at once.
And seconded by Rick, who in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Who opposed?
There's one thing I'd like to add to it. I had forgotten, because I didn't make a note of it. I've had many complaints about speed limit on Windy Lane as a crossroad. And I believe that's posted at thirty-five.
Out by the campground?
No, yes, comes out onto East Road. And that should be added to the ordinance. How about twenty-five?
Well, then, add that to, that motion, we're gonna do this, we might as well do it all at once. Relative to sign changes.
Well, so wait a minute, so we're changing another speed limit on another road?
No, I believe Windy Hill is posted at twenty-five, Cash?
It's posted at twenty-five, but it's not late in the ordinance.
So, in other words, we're just, so you're just saying to update the ordinance and get it in?
Yeah.
Coordinates.
It is posted of twenty-five, but it's not in the ordinance as twenty-five, it's in the ordinance as a ribbon over.
Okay, so as a part of that motion then, I'll also add in that we get Windy Lane in compliance with what it's actually posted as.
Okay.
Up twenty-five.
Who, who seconded that motion beginning?
Me.
All right, are you all right with that?
I'm good with that.
Okay, who in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? So we got a little homework to do, Katie.
Uh, it's been called a couple of other things in its lifetime, so. Hateful Hill, it's been called Pimple Hill.
What is it listed as nine-one-one?
What's Steve Bernard's address?
And I'm kinda worried about that road. I think it's Hateful Hill is what he uses. It's settling.
That hill's settling.
I don't know what we're gonna do down the road if, I mean, we're talking thousands of financial dollars to.
It's beyond a shim and overcoat.
No, the, the, it's dropping off.
Yeah, no, I know.
Sliding to the east there, that's what they're doing.
Close it.
Um, I'm trying to.
The exception of the driveway. Close it.
It's like kinda sliding right down towards the river.
Close it. Close it.
Close it? And it becomes a driveway, Rick?
Yeah.
Get a, get a driveway on there, at least one, two, two houses.
There's two.
That's two houses on there.
I'm, I'm trying.
That's a discussion for another night.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right.
All right.
The other, the other thing too, just to mention to you, and I know you know it's there, is all them cables buried under there. Are they moving with it or? You know, of course, that's what Comcast, I think, own it, don't they?
That's, when they put that cross ditch, Comcast, that screwed up that whole road right there.
Oh, yeah.
See where that started getting out.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Do you wanna do paving upgrade?
Yes. I'm trying to find out Pimple Hill.
Um, so I emailed Brian Sanderson last week about an update for paving grant. Um, and he sent back an email, stay tuned. So then today I got an email, which I forwarded to you guys all, but just for the public. Um, this is what he said. Um, the magnitude of the impact of reduced revenue in the transportation fund due to COVID-19 is still evolving. The legislature recently approved and Governor Scott signed the T bill providing a first quarter transportation budget to allow more time for the funding picture to become more certain. The legislature will be returning later this summer and we will be working with them to create a balanced budget for the remainder of this state fiscal year. As we don't yet know how the available funding may affect creating a balanced budget, Vtrans will be delaying grant awards until a full-year T bill is passed and signed into law. We will be back in touch once we are able to, in the meantime, thank you for your patience.
So in that sense, there's no paving this year?
No paving grant this year.
No.
Right.
Not at all, there's no way. Cause they're gonna come back in September, they're not gonna sign a bill until late September. If not, if not, then it'll be early Oc, uh, October.
Yep.
And at that point, your asphalt plants are closed, so you're, there's nothing this year.
Uh, we do have eighty thousand dollars in the resurfacing article that was voted, uh, voter-approved in this year's budget and we also have ninety-five thousand dollars available in the resurfacing and reconstruction budget, which is typically used for paving. So Cash and I did discuss that earlier too, for kind of the game plan of what we potentially do um, with the money that we are going to have in tax revenue. Um, because of it being a non-grant year, if you will, not awarded grant year since grant money is not likely.
You're not gonna get grant money this year?
I don't find anything in here. We could.
Moving on with the, uh, highway report, ready Mike?
Yeah, go ahead.
We have a driveway permit on Schoolhouse Road. Um, I did a site visit, it does not at this time require a culvert. So, um, it's a down.
Who's it for?
It's actually for Greg Constantino. And it's approximately three-quarters of the way up, Schoolhouse Road on that hill going straight up. Just before the bend. There's a log yard there, like, used, looked like old log yard.
Is that where you filled in up with all that dirt there?
That's up on Parkers.
All right. So it is just around the corner.
Not around the corner. When you're headed up off by McCormick, McCormick Machine Shop, go straight up the hill and you're three-quarters of the way up the straightaway.
Yep.
Or the bend. And he's right there on the right. And it drops off and, and there's no ditch or there or anything, and water's shedding off the road the way it's supposed to into the woods. And there's enough slope there, so it does not require a culvert. What's the?
So per the road business recommendation, I'll make a motion that we approve the driveway permit.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Is that, if, if the puddle driveway there, is that gonna affect the water above the driveway any at all, Cash?
No, because there's enough slope there for water shedding off the road.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, actually there's no flow of water coming down along the road at all.
Add to that motion that the select board chair signed.
And the select board chair signed it.
I'm good with that.
Who in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed?
Just text my ex-boss and he said it's actually his mailing address on that road is East Clarendon. East Clarendon, really?
East Clarendon Road come out all that way?
Well, would have been a four-way intersection there one time.
It would have originally come all the way.
Yep.
Before it got blocked off.
So then is that in there? Cause I couldn't find what we were calling Pimple Hill.
Well.
Or hate.
So basically the ordinance is gonna have to stay East Clarendon Road from whatever to whatever.
From North Shrewsbury Road to Culver Road.
Is gonna have to be one-way.
Yes.
And if there's Pimple Hill signs up there.
There's no Pimple Hill.
There are not, okay.
No Pimple Hill listed in.
Okay.
At least on my miniature computer.
Okay. Yeah, that's the way the ordinance is gonna have to be worded.
All right. We're gonna delve into this a little bit more so that we can, I don't, I didn't find Pimple Hill in there and I sure as hell didn't find.
Well, we can do that afterwards.
Yeah.
All right, uh. You also had a concern with those town hall windows?
Yes, we had, um, a person that was interested in buying the used town hall windows. Um, there's six of them and they are fifty dollars apiece for a total of three hundred. I didn't know what the board's pleasure was on it.
Thought we were saving them for the town garage.
We're thinking about that too, but I don't know if we're gonna be doing anything with town garage.
Right now, we're not.
When we talk about a fire alarm system that's gonna eat up the budget.
I think if you're going to sell them, you gotta advertise them and let people bid on them.
Put them out for bid, but.
Cause otherwise, we're gonna run into problems.
Unless you wanna keep them for the town. I mean, uh, trying to figure out where we're gonna fund and put an addition on the shop. We build the shop.
Yeah, I mean, that.
You were talking, they're still, they're still decent windows. Aren't they?
At this time, I'd, I'd say put them up for sale, uh, do it bid, I got no problem with that. You hang on to them to use in the shop, when they're gonna do the shop? This year, next year, ten years, windows are getting broke.
We should be doing the shop this summer for that new truck coming, but.
It's not gonna work.
Financially, it's not gonna work.
No, we all know that, uh. Well, I'd agree with Robert, put them up for bid.
I mean, you put them up for bid or like Heidi said, I think you have to add a minimum list them.
Yep.
So at least they're listed and that way if the public comes back on you and say, well, why'd you take three hundred? I would've paid four.
How do you, uh?
You at least say that it was posted for, you know, two weeks, you set a minimum, like what we do for positions.
Do we just do it on website, post office, or do we have to do it in a paper and pay that higher price?
No.
No.
No. All right, so the town does have a, an account with Craigslist, so we could post them on Craigslist.
Perfect.
Um, but then typically, I don't know how you would do a bid that way.
You can't really bid it, but you could.
You would need to.
You'd have to probably set an asking price.
Yeah, give direction as to what you want them posted for. And then he could.
You can always take less.
Next amount of dollars or best offer.
All right, we'll work on that. Um, probably take a picture of one of the windows. Open up the bitch.
I think so.
Whatever works. Uh.
Are we done with the roads?
Dan Blanchard was here, but he.
We are, did you have something for the roads?
Yeah.
Cindy's got something for the roads.
I gotta leave.
Don't run too far.
Topolock Mountain, got a lot of potholes. And at the guardrails, the second set coming down, it's washing out between the road and the guardrail.
Yep. We're holding off on that because we were waiting for the grant, cause that was all gonna be paved this year. But now that, if you go down South Brick Road, you notice today we put some hot asphalt down and we just spread it with loader best we could to fill potholes. And that's on the list up there too.
All right, just post them today coming down through, they're getting kind of deep.
That's been there for three weeks now.
Well, squat film right through there from Royce to the top of the mountain.
Yep.
Anything else, Cindy?
No, that'll do it.
Oh, that was easy. Thank you, Cindy.
All right, Dan Blanchard noise complaint?
Not here.
No.
I don't see him.
Yeah, that was, uh, dealing with those cars, is that the who? Is this the one that just south of Tier Road? Yeah.
Yep.
I think so. Um, Sergeant Drew went up and had a chat with them, I haven't heard.
No, Bob, I thought this was about the motor.
Yeah, yeah, Dan, no, Dan's is another one.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's, uh, Multinave.
Oh, on Multinave.
Yeah.
Was.
You know, well, I've mentioned, uh, the motorcycles.
Right.
It's getting to be quite a noise problem.
Yeah.
You know, uh.
In New York.
And I don't wanna totally speak for Dan, I wish he was here, but, uh, there was an episode the other night of fireworks and I guess it set his dog off. Pretty bad shape, uh, what I understand from him. I'm not sure if he had to take the animal to a vet or anything, but, uh, he was upset. And the noise is getting quite strong up there and exhaust fumes and everything lately. You know, I, personally, I have spoken with the, the zoning administrator, not heard back from him. But I think there's some things being done there that need permits. Um, I'm waiting, I'm.
You have an address?
Right now to hear back from, uh, yeah.
Well, I'd say then just we make the sheriff aware of it and we move on.
Write it down.
Yeah.
What was the address of it?
Of, uh.
Blanchard.
Blanchard, he's at, uh, I can't tell the number either, it's right next door to me on the west side. I can't tell the number either. It's right next door to me on the west side. I'm 250, it'd have to be, two. I can't tell you 230, 239 I would say, but I'm not sure.
Cindy O'Leaginess House?
Yeah.
Are the motorcycles on, do they live on the same road? They live there, or they're?
Oh, yeah, they're on the east side of me, right next door to me on the east side. That four-wheelers, uh.
They going up and down the road?
Oh, yeah, they rode them up and down the road.
I'm writing it down.
Okay.
Somewhat, uh, apparently, uh, Dan had a little bit of a discussion with one of them, I take it, one day. I guess now they kind of just, uh,
Irritated.
Give him some obscene gestures.
Yeah.
When they could buy his house, according to him.
That was the kid's ID, or IQ, rather.
Tell him, tell him he's number one?
Yeah, yeah, he's number one.
231 is the address for Dan.
231?
All right. Rick, you're going to have the sheriff.
I'm going to write it down.
And, uh, Katie, can we follow up with Beazuzzi and find out if there's a, a possible issue? Zoning issue there? Because I, they do have a lot of lakes and stuff.
When was last, when did you reach out to Jeff, Bob?
Uh, about a week and a half ago now.
Okay.
Are they running it like a business, or are they just goofing around?
I believe he's running a automotive repair shop.
Is he?
In the garage, but, uh, you'll get different answers when you ask questions, so. Yeah, no.
All right, we're going to follow up on that.
I'll take my bike there and get it fixed.
Full business fireworks permitting. This is Zach Taylor. Katie?
Yep.
All right, so this permit is for Zach Taylor, uh, 1415 East Street. And he's asking for a permit for 717 and/or 718. Um, and he, his conditions are no lanterns, uh, have a fire extinguisher, garden hose, call 911 if something happens, no fireworks after 10:00 PM. Uh, launch away from combustibles and notify any neighbors, especially if they have pets.
So I guess the first thing we need to know is where on East Street is the?
So wherever 1415 East Street.
Look it up.
Where's Haven Hill?
Yeah.
Oh, further south?
Further south. He said he has a big field he's shooting them off. I don't know if that helps.
How do you notify the neighbors? Because if it's down near Alderman's, the horses are there.
I'm not sure.
What's the board's pleasure on this?
What was the street?
Seventeenth, that's Friday and Saturday.
He asked last week.
Yeah. 717 or 718. And what brought to my attention, I think, Katie, that part of us, uh, working with these fireworks permits is, is it, was it 10 or 15 day notice?
Mm-hmm. He did request it last week, though. He was within the 15.
Okay.
Or 14, I guess.
So he is... Okay, I know where he is. He's not very far from Alderman's.
Oh, he isn't?
That's where he is, though, isn't that, that's pretty rural right back in there, though, right?
Um.
Is he down the hill from Haven Hill?
So.
Past Haven Hill?
The property, to me, looks like it's just past Dr. Coco's.
That'd be that new house right across Alderman's, then. Because you got Coco's, and then you got that, people just bought that house right across from Alderman's back.
Yeah, but it doesn't look like, doesn't look like it goes with the house. Maybe it is.
Maps shows it being about halfway.
It's a small ranch. Because Coco's, and there's quite a, there's a field there.
Looked it up, did you?
Yeah, if you use the address, it's about halfway between the intersection from Bump Road and where Alderman's and Haven Hill is. It's almost smack in the middle.
Yeah, so that's pretty rural right now, I thought.
At least that's what Google Maps says, but then again, you never know.
On my, on mine, it shows just before Alderman's truck access. On the right-hand side.
That's Coco.
That's what I was saying, like, the meadow between Coco's and that ranch.
It depends on, does Coco own that meadow?
Oh, I thought he did.
I thought he did too.
He said, so Zach Taylor said he's shooting them off at his mom's house.
Okay.
So I don't, like, and that is the East Street address. I don't know.
So is his mother's 1415, or then?
That's his mother's address.
Is it Taylor, did you say?
Mm-hmm.
So they have a big field.
Yeah, that's what he said. They're shooting them off in the field.
Yeah.
Very big field.
All right. I asked for a, uh, motion. To sign this permit.
I would, um, like to see a better location, that's what bothers me, with the neighbors' horses and stuff.
I would really like to know how close it is to Alderman's and-
Well, and I'd like to know if Alderman's got contacted.
Exactly.
If Alderman's have not been contacted, I'm not in favor of issuing this permit.
I totally agree.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, that's a very, very large horse farm, and horses do not do well with fireworks.
Right, and those are hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Oh, big time.
Yeah. East Street of Clarendon.
Old river. Why am I getting to-
All right, then let me ask you this.
I keep going back to Coal River on this. Is that what you're getting at?
I mean, so I'll make a motion conditional
Right.
upon Alderman's notification and consent.
I agree with that.
Especially with the horses.
So I'll do that. I'll make an approval conditional upon Alderman's notification and consent with the horse farm.
Actually, I got it posted back just south of Brian Johnson's, yeah, porch, right across the road from the old schoolhouse. That's where I got 15, 1415 East Street.
Better do a drive-by.
I thought it was 717 East Street.
1415 East Street.
1415 East Street.
The wrong.
It's right across the road almost from our town land.
Well, making a huge difference.
Which is, is fine with the horses.
With Jeff Taylor.
1415 East Street.
Second house, isn't it?
Actually, it is Jeff Taylor's old house.
Yeah.
It is Jeff Taylor's house. Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Well, Zach Taylor is the son, I'm guessing.
Okay, because right-
Yeah, there's your-
Because right here is the town land.
There's the town land, right?
So I have no problem with that.
Yeah, so it's right across from the swamp.
Yep.
Yeah.
That's fine. So I'll change it. I'll change my motion and approve.
I didn't know I could run this thing like that by myself.
You've done good.
All right, is there a second for that?
Second, that motion.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? And of course, the select board will sign this. Select board chair.
That's a whole different area. There is a big field right there.
Yes, there is.
Well, it's not as big as it looks in there, though, but we're about six, five acres.
Many?
About five acres. Actually, at Adams, we've got an old tractor sitting in the corner of it right here.
Katie, what is this here?
Um, that's what I emailed you, um, it was the claim we received in the mail, so I sent it to Bill Blumer and the board, and Bill Blumer has split out, so it just needs to be signed and emailed.
Can we have a little bit more information about that? What's? I saw it and I just... Something about a lawsuit or something, anything?
The consolidated claim. I, I totally didn't understand it myself. I asked for clarification from Jeff. Do you have that, can you pull up that email that Jeff sent back?
I don't have anything from Jeff. I have something from Bill.
Oh, Bill, that's who I meant, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, just see.
Is this something that happened quite a few years ago that we're involved in with a product or something, or?
Um, so I sent him, um, what we got in the mail, and he said, I would suggest that the board authorize someone to file a claim on behalf of the town. Supposed to be emailed and received by 715, so you have to act quickly. I'll send a marked up copy and some information to you. So then his next email was what needs to be filled out. Um, he said, I have attached the email addresses where the claim must be filed once it has been completed and signed. I scribbled a few notes on the Exhibit B. Those two pages should be typed up, the name of the contact person should be filled in, and that person should sign. The board can authorize the signing. I don't think at this point you need to put my name in as attorney. Probably better that you get things directly. Someone has established a website and assigned values to everyone's potential claim. I have no idea what the formula was, but I have attached the sheet that lists the town. If you get any money, it will probably be pennies on the dollar.
Right. But it, it doesn't, what's the product?
I don't understand what it was for, though.
So, do you, do you remember months and months ago, I think it was probably in the fall, we received this notification that, um, they were doing a county-wide, city-wide, um, statewide, uh, US-wide thing, um, uh, what do you call it, when you have a group that comes together to do a lawsuit?
This one, we all became Indians?
Class action suit, thank you. Um, and so it came via the mail, and we sent it to Bill and asked him, because the notification that we received said, if you want to remain in this class action lawsuit, do nothing. If you do not want to remain in this class action lawsuit, send us a form. And the board decided that they would do nothing and stay in the lawsuit because whatever happens, happens, and maybe the town could get some money out of it, or I, I, I don't know. So, do you, but do you remember that?
Yep.
I do remember that.
So this is follow-up paperwork that they're asking for because you remained in this class action lawsuit. So Katie and I received it, sent it off to Bill for his, um,
Expertise.
His expertise and advice as the town's lawyer. Um, and this is what he has come back with for you all. Uh, and I believe, uh, for the public, it's, it's a class action lawsuit against Big Pharma.
Yeah, so I think when we had that discussion earlier, we said, let's sit back and see where this goes. And then we said we would have to make a decision when the time came. I personally, I still don't know if I would get involved. That's my take on it, but that's, it's up to the- It's up to the board. I mean, I, I-
I, I'd like to know what-
Well, basically, you're just going to be thrown in this class action lawsuit, and if-
What's, what's the lawsuit? That's what I'm getting.
That basically this pharmaceutical company, they're claiming that there was undue harm or undue whatever caused by whatever it is.
An illness or some sort of-
And so basically, they're going after them for a chunk of however many millions of dollars to split up among everybody. That's what it is.
Yes.
Much, 10 million people that want to get in on it.
He suggested option one, and option one was, please include the claim amount derived from the municipality claim model, if available. Please note that this option is not available to Native American tribes.
And I think Bill's basically suggesting stay in because you might get something. The other flip side of it is, is that by the time most of these things shake out, you're going to walk away with $1.98.
Right.
Because it's going to be split among however many thousands of municipalities.
$1.98, you don't cover fees and taxes?
Yeah.
Good time treasurer.
Last year.
But is that, that jeopardize a personal, uh, resident on a lawsuit, though? That's what I'm, it sounds like the town, they're using a town municipalities as a whole coverage. I've seen this stuff with the dairy industry, the milk and stuff.
You know, like Robert said, you'll wind up maybe at a buck 98. When you get all done, it'll cost you more than what the cost bill to send that letter than you ever going to get in.
Yeah. I, I don't know. I mean, the other thing is, the question becomes, is it something frivolous that we really don't want our name attached to?
This is the other thing.
That's, that's where I go with it, because, and truthfully, they don't give you enough information to really know what you're signing on to.
This is where I was born with it.
So, I mean, it's up to, my gut tells me stay away from it, but I, that's, it's up to the rest of the board.
All right.
Mine too.
Yeah. I'd stay away. It sounds almost like one of them things you see advertised on television, now the lawyers will get you this and get you that, yeah.
Yeah. Martin Hardy and Lozati, or whatever.
Yeah.
Lozati.
You, uh, want to make a motion?
10, 10.
Yeah.
Rob, you want to make a motion so that we can have a vote?
I'll make a motion that we not fill out this paperwork.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Not like it's unanimous to make. Put this in here, and you can use this to cause a fire.
And if we missed out on $10 million, I guess they can all vote us out.
I need to go, but I wanted to say thank you, Michael, for helping me.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for addressing the issue. I so much appreciate it.
Thank you, ladies, for coming in too.
Uh, and did-
Thank you.
Did the granddaughter learn something tonight?
Yes.
Is that a select woman? Drive safe. Okay.
All right.
We got one person left.
Cindy.
We already talked to her. She's been-
Relatively. Uh, Town Officers Report. Heidi, do you have anything that?
Nope, uh, just wrapping up the last fiscal year and getting my reporting all together. Um, waiting on the last base date coming down for June, um, and then that'll be all wrapped up, and I'll start getting my spreadsheets together, uh, for the town report for March, so.
Katie, do you have anything that you'd like to, uh, throw at us?
I'm all set.
Hey. Uh, Rob, do you have any concerns?
Not tonight.
Rick?
Good.
I'm good.
Bob?
Just one little thing I meant to mention to Cash earlier. Is that going north on Brick Road yesterday, the cement bridge right by the old Gould place?
Yes.
And that's right on, out on the edge on the east side. It began to be a dip, or has that been there? It looked to me like it was just kind of developing.
Been there.
Been there, okay. I never happened to really notice it, uh, till yesterday I did.
By hockin', gee.
Yeah, yeah, right. That's all I have.[1775.11]